All of our productions at GCTV are sponsored in part by Bay State Health, providing the care you and your family need when you need it, close to home. Visit them online at baystatehealth.org. Greenfield Savings Bank, visit them at 400 Main Street in Greenfield. Call them at 774-3191, or go online to greenfieldsavings.com. Greenfield Community College, providing access and excellence in higher education in the Pioneer Valley. Visit them at gcc.mass.edu. The Hammond Family, the Hammond Family are longtime supporters of Greenfield Community Television. New Fortune Chinese Restaurant on the Mohawk Trail in Greenfield. Visit them online at newfortunema.com, call them at 772-0838, and check them out on Facebook. Real Cleaning Services, cleaning Hampshire and Franklin County since 1972. We don't cut corners, we clean them. Check them out online at realclean.com, call them at 413-422-1143. Peoples United Bank, located at 45 Federal Street in Greenfield. You can call them at 774-3713, or visit them online at peoples.com. The Solar Store of Greenfield, replacing fossil fuels and nuclear power one home at a time. Visit them at 23 Fisk Ave., call them at 413-772-3122, or visit them online at solarstoreofgreenfield.com. Thank you to our sponsors for supporting all of GCTV's productions.
Hi, everyone, this is... The March Regular Meeting of the Greenfield School Committee. We are at the John Zahn Community Center here in Greenfield, Massachusetts, at 35 Pleasant Street. Today is Wednesday, March 13th, 2019. It is 6:33 PM. Can we have a roll call, please?
Number Karen.
Here.
Number Nunes.
Here.
Number Martin.
Here.
Number Hollins.
Here.
And myself, number Ekstrom are here. We have a call.
We need a mic.
Oh, sorry.
Do I have to do it again? Oh, yeah.
Do I have to do it again?
It's okay.
Yes?
It's okay. We're good. We have a call.
We have a call.
Thank you, Secretary Ekstrom. All right, let's jump right into business, everybody. Just for the record, our secretary is not here today. So if everyone can please be sure to speak into the mic and speak clearly, because she'll be watching the video footage. I forgot to mention also, for the record, that we are being recorded and broadcast live from GCTV. Thank you very much, GCTV, for your service to our community.
Just relative to that, I did hear from several members of the public that are having trouble hearing some members. So please do be sure to speak into your microphone. In fact, it might be wise just to leave your mic on throughout the evening, so that you don't inadvertently forget to push it when it's your turn. But please do speak into the mic.
Thank you. So at this time, let's take a look at our minutes. We have three sets of minutes, 213, 225, and 37. Have committee members had a chance to review? Okay, can I have a motion to approve minutes from the Wednesday, February 13th, 2019 meeting?
So moved.
Moved by member Hollins. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by member Karen. Any deliberation? Okay, yes, superintendent?
I would like to note for all the minutes up for approval tonight, that student names need to be initials, and not student first name, last name. For the record, we had discussed that before, so I will pass that note on to our recording secretary. But want to make note of it tonight, that I believe you can still approve minutes, and that's just a typographical change.
Thank you. I appreciate that, I didn't catch it. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. And is there a motion to approve February 25th, 2019 minutes?
So moved.
Moved by member Hollins. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by member Karen. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor? Aye. Beautiful. Motion passes. Oh, abstention from Mayor Martin, thank you. And can we have a motion to approve the March 7th, 2019 draft minutes?
So moved.
Moved by member Karen.
Second.
Second by member Ekstrom. Any deliberation? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Abstention from Mayor Martin. Is there any no, or additional abstention? Member Hollins, are you an aye?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes. Okay, thank you, everyone, for that. And we will move into public comment. Can I have just like a show of hands, as to who's here to comment from the public? Okay, I see one person, okay. When you come to the table, if you actually want to just come up, if you're the only person, you can come on up. I do want to review our public comment policy. But when you come to the table, if you could just make sure that your microphone is on, you press the button on it, and it'll... The light will illuminate in green. As well, you'll want to state clearly your name and address for the record. And I do want to review our public participation at school committee meetings policy. There are a couple of rules here, and I'm looking for committee support related to them. So the main thing is that I want to... I'll just go ahead and read it. "All regular and special meetings of the school committee shall be open to the public. Executive sessions will be held only as prescribed by the statutes of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. The school committee desires citizens of the district to attend its meetings, so that they may become better acquainted with the operations and the programs of our local public schools. In addition, the committee would like the opportunity to hear the wishes and ideas of the public. In order that all citizens who wish to be heard before the committee have a chance, and to ensure the ability of the committee to conduct the district's business in an orderly manner, the following rules and procedures are adopted. One, at the start of each regularly scheduled school committee meeting, individuals or group representatives will be invited to address the committee. The chairperson shall determine the length of the public participation segment. Two, speakers will be allowed three minutes to present their material. The presiding chairperson may permit extension of this time limit." Secretary Ekstrom, if you wouldn't mind being our timekeeper today for three minutes, are you able to do that? Thank you. As well, number three, topics for discussion must be limited to those items that are listed on the school committee meeting agenda for that evening. If anyone needs a copy of the agenda, there is a copy right here. Improper conduct and remarks will not be allowed. Defamatory or abusive remarks are always out of order. If a speaker persists in improper conduct or remarks, the chairperson may terminate the individual's privilege of address. All remarks will be addressed through the chairperson of the meeting. Speakers may offer such objective criticisms of the school operations and programs as concern them. But in public session, the committee will not hear personal complaints of school personnel, nor against any member of the school community. Under most circumstances, administrative channels are the proper means for disposition of legitimate complaints involving staff members. Written comments longer than three minutes may be presented to the committee before or after the meeting of the committee members' review and consideration at appropriate time." So, I think it's important for us to remind ourselves of the rules from time to time, and that's what we have today. Without further ado, if you please be mindful of the rules. Yes, Mayor Martin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. In a recent ruling for the Natick School Committee, it was ruled unconstitutional to prohibit conversations of adverse or negative comments from and during public comment. The Massachusetts Association of School Committees provides policies for all the districts. Natick was one, Andover's another, and Greenfield's another. I think we should take caution with limiting comment on public comment to just positive comments, and to prohibit an open and public constitutional right to speak.
Thank you, Mayor Martin. I just want to reiterate, it doesn't necessarily say that you can't be negative at the public comment. There's just some guidelines here. Okay, thank you, everyone, for your patience. Thank you very much for your patience.
Sure.
If you want to go right ahead, and if you could just, again, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Lonnie Zedanowitz. I live at 25 Philip Street, here in town. I just wanted to address the article in March 5th of the Greenfield Recorder that talked about the civility, or lack of civility, of the Greenfield Middle School and the MSA.
So unfortunately, if I'm following the rules that I just presented, we are not deliberating on the GMS, MSA building, or school culture tonight. So unfortunately, you know, I feel the need to...
Okay, I just wanted to just mention to the fact that I disagreed with that article, because there's never been, and I have lived in this town most of my life, and having four children, an 11-year-old who has special needs, and is done very well on the MCAS in the higher aspect, even though special needs, I disagreed with that statement, and the civility has always been there. And that's what I wanted to let the board know, that that article has been painted the middle school and the MSA in a very bad light, and that this school committee needed to know and be aware of, as a special needs parent, that that is not the case.
Well...
And from the secretaries on up, has always been greeted and treated with my child, who has social skill deficits on up, been treated very well with him on up.
You know, I appreciate hearing your comments. You know, again, it's not on the agenda.
Okay.
And I appreciate you coming, I appreciate hearing that. I want the committee to know, and the public to know, that this is something that's incredibly difficult for me. And in the past, we've had, you know, varying degrees of adherence to the policy. In the past, we also limited public comment to only two minutes, and actually, in the policy, it says that members of the public have three minutes. And I've worked really hard to uphold this policy, and also, you know, find the balance between allowing members of the public to come and speak to us. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to come and speak at this time?
Can we speak about the MS?
You know, I allowed her about two minutes, come on up, you can have two minutes, and then this is... I feel really... I just want to say that I feel really frustrated about this.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mayor Martin?
Madam Chair, I'd just like to say that I support your decision to allow people to speak on any subject.
Thank you.
I'd like to enter into the record an email that was sent to this committee by the mayor regarding this agenda item.
My name is Susan Voss.
Excuse me, Madam Chair. May I respond to the superintendent who addressed me?
I believe that she just requested to add an email into the record. The emails are already into the record. All our emails are public record, so we're not off to a good start today.
I will be brief. My name is Susan Voss, I live at 158...
Could you come a little closer and be sure to...
I can do my best.
Yeah, we just... It's mainly for the record, for our secretary can hear it.
Okay, my name is Susan Voss, I live at 158 Log Plain Road in Greenfield. My husband wrote the letter that they're referring to in terms of the civility. Every child has a different experience in a school. Our experience has not been fabulous. My son has been hit. We've talked to the principal. We are not going to be in the Greenfield school system for next year. My son has been accepted at the Charter School, and we're very pleased by that. Superintendent Harper has been very good about talking to us, and we appreciate that. During our time, my son's time at GMS, he was physically attacked by students in at least six cases. And he has had to have medical attention. I have had the nurse call several times. We don't know the number of incidents, because it's everyday life now for Patrick. He doesn't even think of it. He toured the Four Rivers School with my husband, and he was asked what part he liked best. And his comment was, "There's no yelling." And that speaks volumes for what he is experiencing. It is very different than what other people are experiencing as well, and I am not saying his experience is alone. But this is the part we have seen. We were told it wasn't bullying, because it was only one incident, and then there was a second incident. And then we were told that he didn't want to be friends with this kid, so basically, it appeared that we were being told it was his fault. We would like him to have a great school experience, and he has. Four Corners was amazing. The teachers that we have had at the middle school have been fabulous. We have no complaints. We would like to see something happen for the kids that are going to be staying at GMS. And we would like to start a dialogue about this. Yep?
Thank you. If you could wrap up?
We would just like to start a dialogue. Our purpose is not to get anyone in trouble, or to say that it's anyone's fault. We need to start a dialogue about what's going on, and how it can be fixed. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to comment? Okay, seeing none. We'll move on to reports. Student Representatives.
Hello, excuse me. So I'll start off with sports. The ice hockey made it to tournament. They have seven wins and three losses, and two ties. Boys' winter track ended the season with 10 wins and three losses. Girls' winter track, seven wins and six losses. Boys' basketball also made it to tournament with 11 wins and 10 losses. And finally, girls' basketball made it to tournament and ended the season with 19 wins and four losses. I'll move on to clubs. Student Council recently held Read Across America to celebrate Dr. Seuss's birthday, and representatives from the Student Council stayed in... They read to children who came, and we didn't have a large turnout, but... Because of the weather, but it's always really nice, because all of the kids really love it. We had the dress drive, March 1st and 2nd. And on March 2nd, it was open to the public, and we had people come from pretty far away, and it was nice to see some returning members. And we had a lot of men's attire this year, which was really nice. The Student Council recently attended the Hyannis Concert for MASC, which took place March 6th through 8th. And that was a really fun experience. I went myself, and it was my first year, and my last year, which is kind of sad. But we did a lot of workshops, we had two keynote speakers that were really inspiring, and it was an overall good experience. They are going to have a WMIC bonding at the Hadley Mall on March 23rd. So Student Council members from around Western Mass will go and just hang out at the Hadley Mall. Excuse me, at the Hadley Mall. And Bleacher Wars and Class Olympics is coming up, which the Student Council hosts. And that will take part on March 29th, which is a half day. And the classes compete to decorate their bleachers, and kind of, it's like a competition, so they win. And Class Olympics consists of mini-games in the gym. Key Club, they volunteered at Stone Soup Cafe, March 9th. And they participated in arts and crafts with the kids at the Academy of Early Learning on March 5th. And they're preparing for a badminton tournament to bring in food for a food drive. French Club, they're planning the next Coffee House, which is March 27th. The Tri Music Honor Society is... They've started having mentoring on Wednesday after school for people who need it, and they're going to have a meeting March 11th. Future Business Leaders of America, their donuts came in, so that was good. And they're still preparing for their trip to Boston, which is coming up really soon. The Drama Club, they're performing Clue this year, and the performances will be on April 4th and 5th at 7:00 PM, and April 6th at 2:00 PM. And it's $3 for children and students, and $5 for adults. Drama Cl... Oh, I just said that, sorry. AV Club recently started, and they're establishing what the club should do, they're exploring the members' interests, and they're learning about the equipment that they can use. NHS is having a meeting March 18th. And Spectrum is brainstorming t-shirt ideas, and they visited the GSA at the middle school, and hosted a pizza slash movie night with the GSAs from Frontier and Turners. And to end, I will discuss other events that have been going on, and will be in the future at the high school. So we recently had Taste of World Cultures, which is always like a really fun night. We had lots of different food, the fashion show, we had the break dancers come back, Irish step dancers. We had two people who taught the audience how to salsa. And the telethon for the band is coming up, which is March 19th, 6 to 9:00 PM, which is going to be broadcasted on GCTV. And I think WHAI Radio, if I'm correct. And it's always a good way to make... You call in to make donations. The band and individual performances will be happening. The Travis Ladoy Concert is also a band fundraiser, and that's happening this Saturday. And it might be sold out by now, but I've heard that they are selling... Still selling tickets at the World Eye Bookstore, so I don't know. There's an open house, March 28th, from 6 to 7:30 PM at the high school, which is open to the public. And clubs will have tables. And a GHS senior is running a Drag Queen Story Hour this Sunday at the library, from 10 to 11:00 AM for elementary school students. And that is all, thank you.
I have one question for Morgan. Are you going to demonstrate to the salsa that you performed so well the other night? You can say no.
Yeah, I don't...
I saw you.
It was fun.
Are there any questions or comments for our student rep? Thank you so much for coming, there's so much fun stuff going on, it's great to hear from you every time.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot. Okay. Yeah, thank you so much. So I don't have much to say today, Chairperson report. So I'll just leave it at that. Skip right on over to the superintendent. Nice, short and sweet.
We are starting our superintendent's report with some amazing visitors, our very own Green Wave Girls. I'm going to ask our fabulous basketball team to come forth. The head coach, John Hickey, our AD, we have another coach. Please come to the microphone. I'd like to recognize the Green Wave Girls Basketball Team played at The Cage. They were fantastic, they had a great season. Come on up. Come on up right here. The mayor was there, a number of the members of the public have been involved in supporting these girls throughout an amazing season. I'm going to ask some of the folks here tonight if they want to say a few words, but before I do, I just want to tell you, we could not be more proud of you. I had the pleasure of being at both games, at The Cage. You guys played amazing, you girls, gals, y'all played great. It was a lot of fun, I was the crazy lady trying to make everyone do the wave. And, you know, we couldn't be more proud of you, and it's not about the wins or losses, I know you've heard it a million times. But to be in The Cage, first time in 29 years that you're playing at that level, we are so proud of you and what you have done. And more than that, we're proud of who you each are. You play great as a team, but you're... Each of you are amazing athletes, amazing scholars, you're good people. It shows on the court, it shows in the classroom. We could not be more proud. Good coaching, good kids, thank you.
Yeah, I would just like...
You can sit.
That's why she's a captain. She tells me what to do. I'd just like to thank everybody here for inviting us. The girls were excited when they found out. We were excited. I'm a crier.
That's why I'm not talking.
Yeah. It's bittersweet. But I just want to introduce two very important people, my assistant coaches. Andy Rube is a special ed teacher at the high school, and a volunteer that came on this year, who has a lot of knowledge. He coached in college a few years back in the mid-'90s, so he brought a lot of knowledge, and the girls love him. He's still owes some people some watermelon, though, I think. And then Coach Roy Emerson, who is an area businessman, has been coaching 30-plus years in the area, at least 15-plus, right here in Greenfield, I believe.
Pardon?
15 in Greenfield or so.
Yeah, at least that. I volunteered like 10 years before.
He's volunteered, and he's been... We've been together since I've been here, eight years, and he's a great guy, and the girls love him too. So without them, this couldn't happen, so...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Captains, you want to say anything?
I'll say something.
I would like to say thank you to the community and my teammates for the past five years, and supporting me, and everyone throughout this journey. Ditto. Yeah. Super, thank you so much. Thank you for coming.
Have a good night, thank you.
You can coach my daughter a couple of years later. It's great to have them here, recognizing an amazing season. All right, next, we have some more fantastic special guests, and I'm going to ask three incredible educators. One, two, three, there they are. Please come forward to be acknowledged in front of this committee. I'm going to, again, tear up, probably. So I'd like to ask you to give a round of applause to three amazing teachers, our Grind Spoon Award winners for excellence in teaching. These incredibly dedicated teachers are some of our best and brightest, and one of them is retiring this year. Another one is at the beginning of her journey here in Greenfield after three years. And Ms. Warren is, we're just grateful every day that you stick around with us, so hang in there and stay with us. Madame Grogan teaches French at the middle... At the high school. Ms. Soder teaches at the Four Corners School, and Ms. Warren teaches at Newton School. Please give them a round of applause. I won't make anybody give a speech, but if there's anything you'd like to say, now would be the time.
Just be sure to turn on the mic.
I just want to say that there's an actual tear on the table. I just want to say, I've been in front of this committee many, many times, and just thank you for the support through all the years of being able to go on trips, and being able to run fundraisers, and all the things that we've done to make the language department at Greenfield High School a place where things get done. So I couldn't appreciate it more, thank you.
Sure.
I want to say thank you.
I want to say thank you as well. I'm really honored, I looked over what the IA who had nominated me had written, and there were a lot of wonderful things in there, and I take it very seriously, since this is someone who is in my classroom all the time. One of the pieces that stood out was that she found me to be inclusive. And in my classroom, one of the values that I really instill is being inclusive of all of the kids in the room. I've taught to committee members' children, sons. And so it's really an honor when you're in a role, and you have so much power as a teacher, that someone is seeing that you're modeling what you're teaching. And it was an honor to have someone see me as being inclusive of staff, and of all children of varying abilities. And so I was honored to know that I was modeling it for others. And so I was honored to know that I was modeling it for others and not just, not just saying it in front of the children. And I do firmly believe that kids are looking at us all of the time as their compasses. And I, every day, come to work really grateful to work for this community and in this community, to live in this community. And I really believe in the future of these kids. It's a wonderful job. So thank you.
I would like to say that I am very honored by my Newton School family, which I have been at for many years. And I just love working there. I enjoy working in the city of Greenfield. And I'm just so happy to be honored this way. It really, really feels great to be working for 23 years in Greenfield and 36 years total. And I just enjoy what I do. And I have a great time with the kids. And all of us learn together every day, and I appreciate it. Big shout out to Newton family. Thank you so much. And thank you.
I want to add one little detail, which is that I think I'm very sad to be retiring. I'm going to miss my kids so much. I'm going to miss my colleagues and my friends so much. But I think that it's time to retire when you have taught one of the school committee members.
Was it your first year? It was her first year in Greenfield. And I was on the cusp of whether or not I liked foreign language, and she sealed the deal.
In a good way?
In a good way. I loved it. And I'm definitely one of the teachers that stands out forever. So I'm really glad that...
I have a picture of Member Karan in Friendly's on a field trip that we took. One of the very first ones I ever took.
I love it.
I'm trying to remember what I called myself.
I did pass out the article that was in local media regarding the Taste of World Cultures. And I did pass that out in part because it highlights Madame Grogan's contributions to that signature event. We just had the 23rd Annual. And, you know, the staff are very clear that this has your imprint all over it. And we hope to see you back next year, sitting at the table and also dancing. But we thank you for your contributions and the life and joy that you brought to World Languages. And we hope that only continues to take off from here. And to all of you, we know that you do not go into education to be recognized. And nobody sitting up here tonight asks to be singled out. But your colleagues see you, your principals support you. And out of all of the teachers that were nominated this year, I wholeheartedly stand behind the three of you as absolute models of what excellent teaching in the Greenfield Public Schools and across the Commonwealth and the country look like. Thank you.
Thank you.
Crying, kind of even...
I know.
All right, I'll move into some upcoming events and try not to, try to keep back the tears from now on. All right, a couple of things that you should be aware of. March 12th, we have an open house at the Academy of Early Learning. You do have a flyer on that in your packet. Also in your packet is notification of the Greenfield Public Schools Film Fest. The flyer is here. Our advertisements have been out. We do have a number of community sponsors that are out there preparing for this to be a wonderful event. It will be May 10th. It is a Friday at Greenfield High School. This is our ninth annual. It's been a great event. We're expanding it to an arts showcase this year as well. And we are looking forward to that. So please mark your calendars for that exciting event. March 14th, we have a CPAC Special Education Parent Advisory Committee meeting coming up. Thursday, March 28th and Friday, March 29th, we have early release for parent-teacher conferences. We do have a kindergarten screening day coming up in April, on April 12th. And as I mentioned, the Film Fest on May 10th. Please look for those events. For those teachers that are just awarded the Grin Spoon Award, you have an extra assignment of showing up to the log cabin for a banquet dinner in May with yours truly. Sorry about that, but we'll try to feed you some nice food. There you go. Also in my report this evening, I was asked to speak, oh, two other events that I'd like to highlight at the middle school. The PJs for Cancer Event at the middle school raised $972.05 for American childhood cancer. And March is pennies for patients. And Greenfield Middle School's goal was $1,500 pennies for patients. And Newton School just also completed Penny Wars and donated, I don't have the exact amount, but donated to the sheriff's office, I believe was the recipient. Franklin County Sheriff's Office, I do, had an award of $1,096.28 from Newton's Penny Wars. And here is a photo I can pass around of the children presenting a check to the sheriff's office and a puppy dog. The puppy dog was very happy to receive that, that check from the Penny Wars raised at Newton School to a charity of their choice, charity or cause. We were asked to speak about the telephone system at Greenfield High School. So I will comment on that. Essentially, the status of the Greenfield telephone system at the high school is that it is working. There was, this request actually came forward previous to any concern, but there was one day where we experienced a brief telephone outage, which this committee was made aware of that same day. And that was due to a faulty part that would be very costly to keep on back order as a replacement part. It would have been about $3,000 to have that part at the ready. It was under warranty, it was replaced. And our tech staff did work diligently until those telephone systems were repaired. That was limited to that one day, that outage. And that was, I believe, February 7th, so approximately a month ago now. But I will say that currently, the phones are fully operational. You can reach a live person. You go through the prompts and you can enter an extension to reach the appropriate party. So we do have all services up and running. And we do use the voice-over internet service at the Greenfield High School, which was the recommendation of the Greenfield School Building Committee that designed the high school at the time. Next, in my report, I also wanted to note that a couple of other recent events, in addition to what you heard about from our middle, or sorry, our high school rep tonight, is that Federal Street School, Newton School, Four Corners School, all participated in Read Across America. I was able to participate at Federal Street and read to a second grade class, which was wonderful. And today, at Greenfield Middle School, I was able to observe a theater performance of the play, which is widely acclaimed, called Hoodie. And if any of you were able to see this yesterday and today, where their performance is, it's really a testament to the fact that we have a full-time theater teacher at Greenfield Middle School, a beautiful performance space. And the engagement of our students and the willingness to put themselves out in a performance piece was really inspiring and quite touching. The piece talks about the struggles of being an adolescent in middle school and self-acceptance and image issues that are such important issues at that time. And what it's like to struggle with individuality and sort of breaking away from the pack, so to speak, and really seeing one another and building friendships and collaborative relationships. It was really beautiful, directed by Christine Stevens, our theater teacher, and really nicely done. So I just wanted to give a shout out to that. In your packet tonight, you also have the regular financial reports. And if there are any questions, we can go through those. It includes the memo to the school committee with the budget forecast from our business manager, as well as the customary reports. Those are all included. And then, of course, you have the newsletters for the school. Also on email, I put out the superintendent's social media page, which highlights essentially what I've been up to for the last 30 days. It is 33 pages long from this month. So I did not print color copies, but I have a desk reference if anybody is interested and didn't want to deprive you. But it is a really, when you look back at the things that are happening around the district, it's really remarkable how much happens in a given day and the great things that our students and teachers are up to. Thank you.
Are there any questions or comments for the superintendent or business manager?
Okay, I'll just say, I really look forward to the Grin Spoon winners every year. And sometimes we get lost in policy and budgets and, you know, talking about the details of the public comment policy. And it's really nice to circle back to what this is really all about. And teaching and learning is what we're doing here in this organization. And I appreciate all the hard work that our teachers put into teaching our students and all of, all that they're investing in our community. So thank you. And thanks for bringing them to our meeting.
I just want to clarify, if there are any further questions about the telephone system in particular, our director of technology is present here tonight if there are any further questions beyond what I've covered. I will excuse her if there are no questions for her.
Any questions? Okay. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much for coming.
Happy to see you shed a tear over the...
Seeing that Member Ward is not here, would another member of the budget subcommittee like to report out on any work they are doing?
The Chair, Cameron Ward, was able to be present remotely on March 12th at 1:30 PM. We had a meeting at the town hall. There's only one item on the agenda was to review and approve the open meeting law complaint response on the allegations by Adrian Nunez. So we met, we also, besides the members, Stephen Navirko was available, and we taped the meeting. The response was discussed similar to the earlier March meeting. I think it was March 7th when we went line by line responding, calling them A, B, C, D, E, F, and then also responding to the remedy sought. The, it is, the response to the Attorney General is due tomorrow. That's why we had the meeting on the 12th. And all members agreed to sign and will send it in tomorrow. I have a copy for the Chair this evening, who also is the, is also is the complainant. And I can pass that down to you now. And all school committee members will receive a copy tomorrow when we send it to the Attorney General.
Thank you, Mayor Martin.
You're welcome.
Any comments or questions for the budget subcommittee? Okay. Member Karen, did you want to report out on the Health, Safety and Facilities Subcommittee?
Sure. A good portion of our meeting was speaking about the bus routes and some information from all involved to discuss their safety. And we've already covered that with, including them in our new budget. But the other two things we really talked about were the new SRO MOU language sent to us from the Attorney General and how our chief of police felt about it and what we thought about it. And he has requested a opinion from Attorney Sullivan on his thoughts. And as a subcommittee, we thought that was a really great idea and that perhaps it would behoove the school committee to also ask for an opinion. You know, he's getting one, doesn't necessarily mean we have to, but multiple requests may be fielded differently. And then we also heard from many members of our community, both the fire and police chief, about possibly using our schools as emergency shelters. And they both thought that that was not a good use of our space. There were many levels of safety issues to be worried about. And they would absolutely not recommend that. It would be a last resort of any kind, if ever a resort. So we had a very productive meeting. We, we came to a consensus that we agreed with them about the emergency shelter. I'm not sure that we need a full committee vote for that, but it's possible.
Okay. Thank you, Member Karen. Is, are you interested in putting forward a motion related to requesting opinion from Attorney Sullivan? Or is that something that should, should wait?
I think it can wait. I don't think...
Okay.
We can, you know, see if we haven't gotten a response through the chief in, say, 60 days, if we feel we need to move faster. We did discuss that our current MOU is, just continues on unless we decide it doesn't. And as long as everybody who originally signed it is able to sign it again, it is just a signature that's needed. So it didn't need our immediate hard work, but it is something that's coming along the line.
Okay, thank you. And I see Member Hollins.
Yes, do you mind if I add something? I just want to clarify the emergency shelter a little bit more. There were two types of emergency shelter mentioned. One is an ongoing shelter save for the homeless, something like that, that's going on over days. And another is an emergency incident like, like a storm and there's no power, the schools aren't running. And so for that moment, there's an emergency need to shelter families that don't have heat or something like that, that's short-term. And in fact, there is only one incident emergency shelter in town, and it is the middle school. And the discussion was about the generator outside of, all the power goes out in town, that the DPW has taken over the emergency generator for the first floor of the middle school because it is the designated incident emergency shelter. But, so the discussion was that any kind of shelter need that goes on for days and days can't be part of the school system because it's a functioning school system. Right.
Thank you, Member Hollins. Okay, I believe that the policy subcommittee had to cancel their meeting due to snow. And that meeting is in the process of being rescheduled. And the negotiations, the subcommittee did not meet. So I think that concludes everything with the subcommittees. School committee representatives, do we have anything, Member Ekstrom, from the Collaborative for Educational Services?
We have not had a meeting. Our next meeting is the 27th, and it's actually in this month, 27th, yes. And it's in Greenfield. They alternate between the transportation building and their office in Northampton. So this month, it's here.
Thank you. And Member Hollins, planning and construction?
Planning and construction met, but I was unable to go. And I haven't found out what they covered yet, but I will.
Thank you. Okay, so moving on to our business. Item number one is the 2019-2020 school committee calendar. So you have this in your packet. And Superintendent, did you want to comment on this? Yes, one moment. Yes, Mayor Martin?
Thank you, Madam President. Do we, I don't see anything on here for, for the finance discussion.
So that was covered in the superintendent's report. And I did check in whether or not everyone has any questions for the superintendent or Steve, the business manager. Would you like to speak to the financial reports?
Yes.
Yeah, sure. Steve, do you want to come down? Thank you.
Is it unusual that we don't have Steve up here on a regular basis? Usually he...
You know, he, oh, you mean like in front, or do you mean?
No, I mean on the agenda, it says business manager, finances.
We have been including this in the superintendent's report pretty regularly.
Yeah. Thank you. Steve, one, kind of like skylight global question. Is the, the year-to-date expended to date, like March 1st or?
Yeah, it would be the first of the month.
Okay. So then, there's one-third of the year left. And two-thirds have been expended. So then, would you consider one-third of the encumbrances to be half of the two-thirds?
Okay.
So if you have, if you spent $6, well, the point is that we've got to the year expended for eight months. We have four months left.
Yes.
And of the four months left that are encumbered, it seems like it would equal four months of the previous eight.
It would. However, we do pay teachers during the summer... However, we do pay teachers during the summer, so there'll be a higher amount.
So, next fiscal year is in this fiscal year for the summer?
No. What we do is when we close out, we create a reserve account, and that was done last year with Elizabeth in order to create that, basically a reserve account, then pay out those folks in the summer with that, with the correct fiscal year's money.
And the surplus from that account would go where?
There was not a surplus. But I assume if there was a surplus, it would go to the city.
So, we have, just looking at North Parish, we've expended $255,000, and we have $180,000 encumbered for the next third of the year. And then, we have also $91,900 available in that budget.
Yes.
So, we've nearly, we nearly have enough encumbered for the first eight months, and then we still have nearly a $100,000 surplus.
Yeah. What you're doing is you're pointing out some of the difficulties I've had with this budget. Again, I did not create this budget, and I was not here when it was originally set up. A lot of folks were put in very odd places. So, what we're going to need to do is transfer those surpluses around to the negatives because, for example, we made Greenfield Middle School teachers, we were paying, we are paying and were paying some high school teachers out of there. They were just not coded correctly from when they originally showed up. So, and then to do that mid-year, you have to account for the mid-year salary plus the summer. It becomes very time-consuming, and unfortunately, my time has been spent doing other things at this point. But now that I have a bit of a reprieve, I can, the plan is to start cleaning up those balances.
Sure. Thank you. Have any revenue accounts been applied to the operating budget?
Yeah. Recently, what we applied were we applied some IDA grant as well as circuit breaker money. If you saw any of the old sheets, the out-of-district placement account was quite large. So, what we're doing is bringing that down by design, by plan that was made in FY '18 for the FY '19 budget in order to spend down those revolving accounts and those offset funds.
So, the encumbrances on the revolving accounts, would they, they are to be transferred to the operating account?
That is correct.
So, the encumbrances, with just the revolving is about 1.28 million?
Exactly.
Will be transferred to the operating account, which currently expects to spend 7.5 million in the next 120 days.
Well, 120 days plus the teachers who get paid in the summer.
Certainly, we don't have all the teachers in the summer.
Actually, quite a number of them get paid for during the summer.
Oh, it's a regular annual salary.
It's a regular
But stretched out over 12 months.
Exactly.
Thank you. Okay, I didn't have time to go deeply into this.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I see Member Hollins.
Yes, the Mayor asked a question that piqued my interest. Teachers work 181 days in a budget calendar year, and then they have the choice of spreading that money out over 12 months. So, when it gets to summer, isn't that summer pay part of the salary of the prior year, not the current year? Because it's part of their, like, if we paid once July 1 rolled around, it was part of their FY '18 salary that they chose to distribute over the summer. But did you
Yeah. Basically, what we budget for their entire salary but pay it over the 12 months. So, once July 1 rolls around, there's a balance left that rolls into a reserve account, and then they're paid out of that reserve account during the summer.
Okay, but it's still FY '18 money that's pulled over to now FY '19.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Yes. You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments for Steve? Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks a lot. Okay, back to the draft calendar for next year.
All right. In front of you, you have the 2019-2020 calendar. We know that many parents look forward and families look forward to the approval of the calendar because they get to mark the vacations and put them on their refrigerator for the following year. So, I am going to ask you to approve the calendar this evening. A previous draft came before you. Since that draft, the calendar has gone to the appropriate contractual units, which is according to the teacher's contract, for example, for feedback from the membership, and then has had subsequent, some of those additions were, some of those revisions were incorporated, some were not, but the revisions have all been considered. And the calendar in front of you tonight, we think, represents the best calendar for next year. A few highlights are that we start the first day of school for all students is August 28th, again, starting before Labor Day. We do keep the meet and greet feature right at the beginning of the year for families with the elementary, middle school, and high school. We do have new teacher orientation and then teachers' professional development. In early October, we will have an open house for the middle and high school that is on one night, and for the elementary, that's on a different night. And that was based on feedback from this past year about families wanting to visit multiple schools with children at lots of different levels and wanting to be sure to be able to attend those. And we've also moved it earlier in the season because we had parent-teacher conferences later in October, right around the time of the open house, and folks were just there for one event, and we wanted to space those two out so families could come back for both of those events. So, that was again in response to feedback. Other than that, this is very similar to last year's calendar with a December vacation, February vacation, and April vacation, and the last day of school, including five snow days, would be June 18th. And this does meet the requirements for time on learning, and we would ask that you approve this before you tonight.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the draft calendar for the 2019-2020 school year? Moved by Member Ekstrom.
Seconded.
Seconded by Member Karen. Any discussion?
Yes.
Yes, Member Ekstrom.
I, so, I'm not from here. February break is not a normal thing where I come from, and I don't, I guess, I don't understand the rationale for it. And here, so, here's my thinking. So, we have essentially two weeks of vacation for the holidays, just for, you know, the end of December, start of the school year, or start of the new year. And then, they have one day off that is, let's see, on the 24th, there's, 24th, there's no school for teacher in service in January, the 20th, there's no school for Martin Luther King Day, and odds are pretty good. I think this year has kind of been out of the ordinary. They're going to have five or six days off for snow within that time. So, really, they have 28 days of school from the start of January until their break, and then they have another break in April. I don't know what the rationale for the February break is. So, I'm hoping that someone can enlighten me. I guess that's my question.
Okay. Superintendent, do you have any information on the history of the February break?
How far back do we want to go? Honestly, I mean, the school vacation calendar is built around agrarian society and the plowing and harvesting and times when the fields are very muddy and cold. But in all seriousness, to today's family, I do believe that many families expect this schedule. It is not a change. It is consistent with the past. If the committee was interested in seriously considering eliminating the February vacation and combining it with the April vacation, some districts have done this, and if they do, they tend to adopt a March vacation and eliminate the one week of vacation altogether. I'm not sure how popular that would be, but if this committee were considering that, I would seriously request that you give that plenty of public input and advance notice and that that significant a change not happen tonight.
Thank you, Superintendent. Any additional comments or questions related or deliberation on the FY '20 calendar? Okay, seeing none, we have a motion on the table to approve the FY '20 calendar. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, I believe that is unanimous. So, there it is. We've got a calendar. Thank you. Okay, so, the next item is proposed draft changes to the school website. This was brought forward by Member Ekstrom several months ago and was delayed for good reason a couple of times. So, this is just a draft document. Member Ekstrom, did you want to speak briefly to your interest in modifying the website?
I can. Do we need to do a motion or something?
You just want to speak briefly to, like, the origin of this document, just as a reminder to us.
Okay. So, I just, in perusing our websites, and now that I've been sitting here on the committee, I think that there's not a real clear picture of what it is the school committee does and the Subcommittee's do and the Superintendent's role. And I thought maybe just changing a little bit of a text or making it a little bit more apparent when you go to the school committee landing page might help to alleviate some confusion about who is doing what. You know, what specifically, I mean, the Budget Committee, obviously, that's kind of apparent what they're doing, but for example, the, what is it? Katie's, Katie's, what is it?
Health Safety.
That's not necessarily, you wouldn't look at that and think that some of the things that go on in her committee are things that would be discussed, which doesn't say they shouldn't be, but it's not apparent just from the title of it. And so, the text is just sort of an expansion. It's not written in stone by any means. I'm not, if we want to change it, that's fine. I just think it would be helpful for people in the community and anyone else who goes to the website and gets a better idea of exactly what it is we do and how decisions are, how decisions are made. You know, when, when people come to committee meetings and say, we had, we talked about the budget and how the budget, are we going to approve it? There's a lot of behind-the-scenes discussion, and that isn't necessarily clear unless you are paying attention.
Thank you, Member Ekstrom. I, what I don't want to do tonight is have a big group editing process on TV, and I think that there is a need to add some input. In addition, I am well aware that the Policy Subcommittee is also reviewing some language related to our standing Subcommittee's, and it could be helpful to include that here. Question before I move is, Superintendent, is there someone in your office, perhaps the School Committee Secretary or someone helping with the secretarial tasks, that could receive input from the committee and help to kind of move this document into the next phase?
Yes. My concern would be how that process would be open meeting law compliant. I'm not, I'm not sure. I think you have a good suggestion there. I'm not sure how that would work operationally.
I believe that if members want to send input to a school staff member without including other members, that may way, that individual staff member can compile it, maybe just take in that input and kind of just bring this draft up to the next level.
Sure. We could certainly receive any input and compile it. My concern would just be then communicating back out those changes and getting to a draft that everybody agrees with. You could conceivably receive two different sets of feedbacks that are conflicting from two different people. So, I don't, don't want to step on toes, but one suggestion that might work is having a Subcommittee that would also review this.
Okay. I move that the, I guess the Policy and Program Subcommittee take this on. So, my motion, clearly for the record, would be to move that the Policy and Program Subcommittee review the draft webpage changes and bring a second draft to an upcoming meeting, either April or May. Or is that a second?
Four.
Cool. So, I moved it. Member Ekstrom seconds. Deliberation, I see Member Hollins.
I don't agree. So, let me explain what I think we, the Policy Subcommittee, I believe, should be working on what you said, which is the policy on Subcommittee's. There was a long discussion on whether or not our policy should have a charge. You know, here are the standing Subcommittee's. One is not an ELELT task force. That was a situational committee, which I don't even know if it exists now. And there was a suggestion that we should have, it shouldn't just be up to whomever's on the committee, charge for each Subcommittee, and I do think that should go to the Policy Subcommittee. But as for the text and, you know, other parts of the school committee website, I think maybe just asking if someone else wants to work with Member Ekstrom, because there's some other issues like posting our minutes and making sure that the time that Subcommittee's meet, anyway, there's a whole section for the school committee. So, I don't agree. I do agree that the standing committee charge should be worked on by the Policy Committee because we have a policy on that.
Thank you, Member Hollins. Any other discussion? I just want to clarify that it's my understanding that what we're doing is reviewing these draft changes to the website, the draft changes that have been presented, and not necessarily having, looking at the entire website and offering feedback on the entire website. So, this is essentially like giving feedback on the actual language content of the site as opposed to, say, what was just mentioned, which would have been like where and how the draft minutes are posted.
Could I clarify one other thing?
Sure.
If our policy on Standing Subcommittee says, here's the charge of each Subcommittee, then the wording could be that the school committee has several Subcommittee's for clarification of their charge and a link to the policy.
Mm-hmm. We can make whatever changes we want. This was meant to be people-friendly as opposed to, you know, based on policy, this is what this one does, this is what that one does. This was more of a, in my mind, it was more kind of a marketing piece. And I don't disagree with you, Susan, by any means. I just, that wasn't kind of my thought process when I was going through it.
Yes, Mayor Martin?
Just a couple of observations. I understand that the, the school department's website is not on the city's website. It's a link attached to the city. And is that still falling into the realm of the liability coverage that the city has? I've been told that it doesn't. And in fact, our technology department is working through a program now with the state to see how that, all these other offline semi-official websites are being used representing the city of Greenfield. Number two, how did this website get started, and who created the original language?
So, I think we're getting a little, oh, who created the original language?
We're modifying something that, I don't know who.
Who did create the, do you know, Superintendent? I feel like, I have a vague recollection that the school committee did provide some, a basic draft. I can go back and look it up.
I don't know.
Yeah, I think the committee did. Sorry, I don't know the answer.
So, I think part of the Policy Committee would be developing what are the regulations that we need to follow if we're going to consider it an official website.
Slightly off-topic, but I'll make a note of that. Okay, so, the motion on the table right now is to have the Policy Subcommittee review the language that's presented here and return with a second draft. Any other deliberation on that? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
I'm opposed.
Okay, any abstentions? Okay. So, this will go to Policy Subcommittee for some review, and it will bounce back to the full committee for further consideration. Okay.
Just reading ahead.
I thought it was on the wrong.
No, just reading ahead.
Want to make a note of? Okay, great. So, the next
I thought it was on the wrong.
No, just reading ahead.
Want to make a note of? So the next item on our agenda is the filling of a vacant seat. So we have had Member Alexander resign from the school committee. Thank you, Member Alexander, for your service to this committee. I've always appreciated how Member Alexander has been such a huge advocate for the public schools and for, really, truly for our students and our teachers. And I've always appreciated his enthusiasm, willingness to jump into his duties as a school committee member, but also really vocally support our students. So thank you to Member Alexander for your service to Greenfield. And now that we have a vacancy on the school committee, we need to fill it. So in your packet, what we have here, I included the policy on school committee voluntary resignation, was a voluntary resignation, and Member Alexander submitted the resignation to the city clerk as the policy indicates. And then also there is policy B, 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 E, that's B as in boy, unexpired term fulfillment. And I'll read it off quickly, it's very short. "When a vacancy on the school committee occurs for any reason, the remaining members of the committee share the responsibility. The vacancy on the school committee will be announced publicly. Residents will submit letters of interest to the chairperson. After being advised of all applicants, the vacancy shall be filled by a majority vote of the remaining members. Following new member election, following new member election by the school committee, the chairperson will determine any committee assignments. Persons elected to fill a vacancy by the school committee shall serve only until the next regular election, at which time the vacancy shall be filled by the voters." So there are a couple of things that the committee really needs to consider today. So as you can see here, our policy is pretty basic, and it just outlines that anyone interested should submit a letter of interest, and then we vote on it. But in the past, we have followed some slightly more involved process, and at times we've invited individuals to come and speak to the committee and had sort of, allowed them to make a statement and sometimes answer questions, and then we would have a vote on those individuals. And so that's not included in the policy. So I think what we want to do today is really clear up how we want to handle this and also potentially set some deadlines. You know, in the past, we have appointed individuals pretty quickly, usually giving about a month of time. So I think that it would be really helpful to the public to know any relevant deadlines that we want to set, and then any other parts of the process that we anticipate. I'm seeing Member Hollins.
Could we clarify the length of the term?
Sure. So according to policy, the appointment would serve until essentially the end of this calendar year, and this position, this seat, will be up for election at the November election.
This year?
This year.
And?
Yes, Member Ekstrom.
And that would be another, that would be an additional two-year seat as opposed to, because Don's seat is a full four-year seat.
Yes. So my understanding is that there will be, on the ballot, one two-year seat and three four-year seats at the November election.
So this is like an eight-month term?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So to start this off, I guess I'll put forward a motion for us. I move that the Greenfield School Committee accepts letters of interest until, I don't know when, I don't have my phone.
Our next meeting?
I think it should be before that.
Do you want a date?
Yeah, I'm looking for some dates.
Do you know how long it would take to put an ad in the paper, a notice?
I think about two or three days. It's usually pretty quick. So our next school committee meeting is April 10th. And I propose that the school committee receive letters of interest until the end of the day, Monday, April 1st.
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion on this? Might, just quickly, I think that that allows us enough time to ensure that we organize all of them and make sure all committee members have them and have plenty of time before the next regular meeting for us to review them. Yes, Member Hollins?
So I move that we put an ad?
There's a motion on the table first, but hold, hold that thought. Mayor Martin, and could you press your button? Thank you.
Press my button, I will. Is the, is the notice, and I'm thinking along the same lines, I guess, with some people, if we advertise publicly as the policy suggests, then we also have, everyone has the knowledge that they have to draw the papers to run in the election in April. So even though they may serve till December, if nobody takes out papers, then we will have a vacancy in November. So we need to protect ourselves for, we can't force people to run, but somebody's got to run for the seat, or this temporary appointment will become permanent January 1st.
What, I'm not following what you're suggesting, actually.
We're filling a vacancy until the next city election, which is in November. But to be on the ballot in November, you have to take out papers in April and return them.
So you're just reminding the public that if any individual is interested in an appointment and they want to continue and also run for office, they also have to go through the process of running for office?
Right. I guess I'm saying that. And then I'm asking the committee, what shall be our choices? If nobody takes out papers to run as a candidate, then this position expires December 31st.
I guess I don't.
That's for discussion and another.
Basically, what I think Mayor Martin's wondering is if nobody runs for this two-year seat.
Uh-huh.
What do we do then?
Well, I believe that the committee would have a vacancy, the new committee, starting on January 1, would have a vacancy and then be looking for an appointment. That's my, my understanding of the process. I would encourage the new committee to then reach out to the city clerk and ensure that, you know, proper process is being followed. But that's my understanding of what would happen if, if no one ran for the two-year seat.
You were going to take a vote, right?
Member Hollins? Did you, okay. Yeah, so there's a motion on the table to receive letters of interest until the end of the day, Monday, April 1st. Who seconded that? Did you second that?
I did.
Okay, thank you. Any further conversation on that? Yes, Member Hollins?
When you say letter of interest, are you, do you mean communications? Because...
So in our policy, it states that if someone's interested in being appointed to the school committee to fill the unexpired seat, that they should submit letters of interest to the chairperson.
Will it email? I'm just clarifying.
Oh, whether it should be email or snail mail? Okay. Thank you for that clarification. I strongly prefer email. My email address is adrnu1@gpsk12.org. If there's anyone out there that would like to send us snail mail, we can make some arrangements for that.
We'd use the superintendent's, to you, at the superintendent's office.
I think that's a good idea, yeah, to send to the superintendent's office. Thank you. Okay, so again, motion on the table for this first deadline of when we will stop receiving letters of interest. Any more questions, comments? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, so that is unanimous. And then the second piece is, how do we envision, I, in the past, we have had, we've invited folks who have submitted letters of interest to the school committee meeting and allowed them to make a brief statement. And occasionally, we've had a little bit of question and answer. Most of the time, I think it's just been mainly a statement. I'm not sure, it's hard to gauge how many individuals we will have submitting letters of interest, but I guess the question I'm asking is, do we want to include that as part of the process to allow them to come to our meeting? I'm seeing Member Hollins.
Well, I think we should at least meet the people. So, but I think the next step, though, is posting the notice. But I, I think the process should at least involve people introducing themselves to us so we know who they are.
Okay. So I heard the start of a motion from you earlier to post in the newspaper.
Yes, I, I'd like to move that the superintendent post a public notice of the eight-month school committee opening with the needed information for applying.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mayor Martin. Thank you. Any deliberation on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. That is unanimous. Great. And then I will move to invite, man, to invite the folks interested in, that have submitted letters of interest to the committee, to attend our April regular meeting, provide a two-minute maximum statement, and be prepared to potentially answer questions from committee Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Member Karen.
Could you read it again, please?
Sure. I don't have it all the way written out, but Susan Farber, where are you?
I think you said.
I said to invite the individuals who submit letters of interest to the committee to come to the April regular meeting, provide a two-minute maximum statement to the committee, and be prepared to potentially answer questions from committee members. Okay. Any conversation, any deliberation on that? Okay, great. I just want to say that I, again, have kind of no idea how many people will submit letters of interest. A couple of people have already reached out to me, inquiring about it, and we've received two thus far. So we will definitely, we definitely want to have an opportunity to, to meet people and, but also will be probably limiting our question. It won't be like a full extensive interview, simply due to time. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I believe that's unanimous. So I guess the only other thing that, I guess if we want, I'm not sure if we necessarily need a motion on this, but do we want to say that our intent is to make this appointment at the April regular meeting? That was my intent with having them come to that meeting.
Unless there's a reason not to, I support that, but there may be something that happens.
Okay. Yeah, Member Hollins?
I just have one more question.
Sure.
Will you be collecting all of these applications? And so for the April 1st meeting, we will get them all at one time, or will they be?
So the meeting is not on April 1st.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The meeting is on April 10th.
But the question is, will we get these all in a packet at one time?
So the answer is yes. I have sent you the full committee, the two letters of interest that I have received thus far, I've just sent them in real time. However, I intend to package everything together, and of course, they will also be included in our full committee packet for the meeting. So at some point, they will definitely be put side by side together.
I would prefer we get them all together so we're not tempted to, you know, for some that come a month in advance. Anyway, I would prefer we just get them all together in a packet.
Um...
I'll move that we...
Okay, do you want to move that?
Yeah, I'll move that the applications be provided to the school committee in a packet.
And not in advance?
Not individually, as they arrive.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Member Ekstrom. Any conversation on that? The only thing that I would say is that, you know, it's a little bit, I guess, unfair because I've already sent the two out to the committee. So as long as, I guess, we're okay with that. I don't really have a strong preference. Yes, Superintendent?
Never mind.
No comment? Okay. Any comments, anything? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Pardon? Did you have a comment?
I just wanted to clarify, could we continue to send out the individual candidates as they come in?
So my understanding is what's being suggested through this motion is that the, that that would not be the case, that I would hold back those letters of interest until one time after April 1st, when they get sent out to the committee as a full packet. I believe that's, is that accurate, Member Hollins?
The packet, I don't mind knowing who is applying, but, yes, that was the intent.
Okay, that's the intent, to hold them back and then present them to the full committee as a group after April 1st.
That's how you handle other applicants for jobs we're selecting.
Any other questions or comments or anything? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Member Hollins? All those opposed? No?
No.
Okay. And I don't think there's any abstentions, right? Okay, so the motion fails. Can we just have a kind of consensus that I will send them out in real time as best as possible? Great. So as I mentioned earlier, I will absolutely put them all together into one packet, like a collective packet, at some point after April 1st. But as I receive them, I'll just send them out to everybody. And then, so then, I guess, you know, I'll move that the intent is to select a new member at the April regular meeting, barring any unforeseen circumstances or interests of the committee. Is there a second? Second by Member Hollins. Okay. Any conversation on that? Cool. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And any opposition? You're a yes? Okay. Okay, great. So motion passes. Okay, so just to quickly summarize, for the benefit of the committee and the public, we essentially just made the decision that if anyone is interested in filling the vacant seat, they can send emails of interest to me at my email address, which is adrnu1@gpsk12.org. That's also on the website, and I believe on the town website. We will receive letters of interest until the end of the day. We will receive letters of interest until the end of the day, Monday, April 1st. And it is our intent to select a new committee member at the April regular meeting, that is April 10th, 2019. And anyone who is submitting letters of interest should be, is invited to attend the April regular meeting to provide a brief statement to the committee, maximum length of two minutes. And committee members may have questions for them. As well, we just requested that the superintendent put all of this information into a tidy package and post it in the newspaper. Okay? Yes, Member Hollins?
I just want to clarify, is there any consistent information we want from these candidates?
Are you putting? I guess if there's something that you're interested in, I would recommend that if you want to put forward a motion.
This is what I'm interested in. If one person sends a resume and the other person writes, "I'm just interested because I live in, because I'm interested," will we then say, well, this person sent a resume, they're more interested? So, I'd just like to clarify if there's any, any consistent information. I don't care if there is or if there isn't, I'd just like to know so the candidates would know, you're, you should submit this and this, or proof of residency, or whatever it might be.
In order to serve on the school committee, you do need to be a resident of Greenfield. And beyond that, our policy simply states that individuals should send letters of interest. It doesn't specifically outline that anyone should send anything else. We do receive resumes sometimes. So, if you have a specific interest, Member Hollins, you should put forward a motion.
No, I just wanted to clarify.
Okay. Okay. Great. So, that is set. Thank you, everyone. Now, for the next month, we'll be without Member Alexander. And he was the chairperson of the policy subcommittee, as well as the negotiation, pardon, the Personnel and Collective Bargaining Subcommittee. So, I'm proposing that Member Karen take over the chair of the policy subcommittee. Member Karen, is that something that you can take on at this time?
Sure.
Okay. The other, I lost my time, oh, there it is. Member Ekstrom left the room for a second, so I also am proposing that Member Ekstrom take over chair of Personnel and Collective Bargaining. My intent with this is really as interim chairpeople for the next month until we have a new committee member, and then we can kind of decide if we want to make any changes from there. So, this is just to kind of cover us moving forward. I don't actually necessarily anticipate the Personnel and Collective Bargaining Subcommittee meeting, but we never know, especially if there's no charge really for them from the committee right now. I'm seeing Member Hollins' hand.
Yeah, would, would you like to wait? Because it's only one meeting, because the person, it may make, just-
So, actually, with policy, I absolutely do not want to wait. I think that, you know, there is a reschedule happening right now of our, it's no cancellation, and there's a lot of work that can continue. So, I'm putting forward the recommendation that we allow Member Karen to formally take over the chairpersonship of the policy subcommittee. Great. Sounds like, sounds like Bill approves. So, yeah, Member Ekstrom, thank you for coming back. Thank you so much. I don't anticipate any need for the Subcommittee to actually meet. There's no charges for that Subcommittee from the full committee at this time. However, as a formality, if you are able to take over the chairpersonship for the next month or so, until we make any decisions on Subcommittee configuration with a new member, can you do that? Great. Super. Okay, so I would love a motion to support the interim chairperson position of Member Ekstrom as Chair of Personnel and Collective Bargaining, and Member Karen as Chair of Policy, until any further Subcommittee reconfiguration may occur with a new member. Lots of words to do, a small task, huh? Is there a second for that? I'll move that. Is there a second? Second by member Ekstrom. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. Unanimous. Thank you very much. So, that's set. I appreciate your attention to that. So, the next item is actually the civics update, update, and just almost immediately after posting the agenda, I received word that the civics update will be coming at the April meeting. It's my understanding that Principal Patnod is helping to present information on the work that's being done at the high school related to civics curriculum that needs to be implemented in the next school year. So, we will see an update on that at the next meeting, and then just as a simple reminder, there was a one-sheet kind of brief summary from the DESI website that was provided in last month's packet. Okay. Number six, the superintendent evaluation mid-cycle review. What you have is a copy of the superintendent's performance goals. This, I believe, may be the first time that we have actually had a mid-cycle review for the superintendent evaluation. And it's my understanding that this can kind of look a lot of different ways, depending upon the committee. So, what we have here today is the superintendent to provide a verbal update on where things are with this year's superintendent's performance goals.
Thank you, Chair. So, you all have in front of you a copy of the superintendent's performance goals, those of you that are viewing at home. All of our materials are always online, gpsk12.org. You can go on the School Committee tab for tonight's materials, and we also post these goals separately. There are five goals. These are ambitious goals. They were voted in November, mid-November, with minutes that came in December. And in the intervening four months, so it's not truly a mid-cycle yet, it has been four months almost to the day from the day they were voted. There has been, the primary focus of the district has been on the budget, and the FY20 budget. And as you all know, the budget was voted through this committee last Thursday, March 8th, I believe, and the documents for this meeting were due the next day, Friday, March 9th. So, the update that I provide tonight will touch on a few things, but I will primarily say that the work of school district does go in cycles. Because we are focused on the children, and the students, and the teachers, there's work that looks like it might be divided evenly over the school year, that actually comes and goes in the sort of natural rhythms of a classroom and a school district. For example, hiring cycles, grant cycles, and evaluation cycles are just a few amongst those. I will also note that on that Friday, we did work diligently to address a payroll issue, which we coordinated with City Hall to address and respond as soon as possible. It is our understanding that that was resolved by the close of business that day, but we did work closely, including my office directly, and obviously, business office and payroll, to also coordinate with the union, teachers' union, and to issue paper checks to anybody who had a, an issue with their, their direct deposit that, on that payday. And we do appreciate everybody's understanding. Please be assured that the school department did everything that we could and within our power, and we were assured it was not the error on the school department's side. And so, things like that do take precedent from time to time. I will highlight the five key areas of this and give you a brief update. The first one is Greenfield Public Schools' positive role in the community and strengthening that role. And this has everything to do with our partnerships and forging connections, working with universities and so forth, and this work is definitely well underway and continuing. It also highlights my role as the president of the Connecticut Valley Superintendent's Roundtable, a role within which I have the opportunity to connect with area legislators, including the Senate President and others that are representing public education, and to advance the cause of public education as it relates to our students here in Greenfield. And that is ongoing. This includes exploring cost savings, utilizing print, radio, and social media to promote the school district, and of course, maintaining active involvement throughout the city. So, these are all ongoing. These goals, as written, are very clearly delineated, so in terms of updates, they also include eight or nine examples of what evidence will come forward to the committee at the end of the review. When we spoke about the mid-cycle review as part of the goal setting, it was clear that these were not requested during the mid-cycle review, but rather just a check-in, so that we could all be on the same page when it comes time for the formal review. The second goal is a student learning goal, and it has to do with aligned curriculum and student outcomes. And in this particular goal, I've chosen to focus on a robust vision for aligned curriculum instruction, with a particular emphasis on the turnaround work at Greenfield Middle School. Again, this was voted back in November. I'm proud to say that that work is ongoing and continuing, and we do have senior leadership at the Department of Education in the state systems of support that has been involved with that work, led by Principal Kuzland, with members of the faculty, I believe fifteen members of the faculty are now on the turnaround plan teams, working on strategic partnerships in different areas. That work has been underway, and we would like to bring before the committee a presentation on what that work means, what is already taking place, and what's upcoming for the future. We have confirmation that in April, the senior leadership that's heading up that team would be available to come before this committee, if you'd like to hear from them. And of course, you saw many members of the Greenfield Middle School staff, and the principal is here tonight. Next are a number of specifics to that. Again, I won't go through all of these, but I will mention, maintain and support Greenfield Public Schools' strong elective program with consideration in the FY20 budget for expansion of foreign language and integrative arts programming. So, these are examples where something may have come through the cycle already, and so maintaining, for example, strong electives was a, an important focus during the budget season. There are a couple of areas where I need the help of the committee, and I will highlight one here. In this second goal, you see that the second to last bullet says, enlist the help of school committee, parents, administrators, and community supporters to highlight the achievements of all of Greenfield Public Schools' unique schools, with a particular emphasis on under-recognized programs and offerings, including equestrian program and community service learning at Greenfield Middle School. And this is really a goal that, while I can bring it to your attention, I do need the support of the committee to meet this goal. And I do hope that we can find avenues to add to the agenda and to explore topics that may not be as familiar to this community and that deserve our attention. There are programs that are noteworthy, that make Greenfield a destination to choice in. There are programs that are important to the quality of the education of our students, and we spend so little time talking about them, that I'm concerned that the community is not aware of the resources that we actually have. So, I would like to note that as an area that I feel I would not meet that goal unless I were able to garner the support of the committee on that. The third goal is the area of work environment and staff support. And, and I will say, this is a challenging goal, it's an important one, though, and talks about creating a dynamic, vibrant work environment that balances accountability with respect for individuals' administrators' roles as leaders, and ensures sustainable financing of positions. And again, this is ongoing work and important work. It has to do with negotiating contracts, but also the quality and balance of time in our work. Some things that are ongoing include continuing to expand efforts to recruit and attract well-qualified employees. So, for example, one area that we had a need was in transportation, and our new transportation coordinator has been working very diligently to bring on staff in a critical area. So, we've seen crossing guards, for example, that in areas that were previously vacant, like Bernadette Road, where we had an acute need for additional crossing guards, and that we're now cross-training those staff members, so that they're familiar with our students. So, that's an area of where we're focusing in on recruitment efforts, and that have been very successful. The third bullet point is again, an area that I'm going to call out to the committee for your support, which is prioritize time on matters affecting student learning, limiting distractions outside the instructional core, and directing and encouraging administrators to do the same. And this is because, as a supervisor of principals, you wear two hats, one is a manager and one is a coach. And when I'm in the classroom or the schools as a coach, what we're talking about is, how often are you in classrooms, and how often are you observing teaching and learning? And that's what makes a good principal effective, because they have positive relationships with students and positive feedback to staff, because they're there and they know what's happening for our children. If you were to imagine a principal that were only in their classroom, sorry, only in their office, they, they simply couldn't be effective at providing feedback on instruction or getting to know our children. The same is true for the superintendent. If I'm not in the schools and working directly with those principals, it's very challenging to be effective in a turnaround plan, or in supporting and encouraging our administrators to have the most cutting-edge teaching feedback to provide to our teachers. So, in the coach role, it's extraordinarily important that we prioritize our children and their learning, and that that, at the end of the day, is what we're here to do every day. And so, I'm just going to ask the committee, in thinking about agenda items, in thinking about the work of the committee, that we can continue to make student learning central to our mission and what we're here to do, and that we talk about how students learn, and that there be space for that key, critical work to take place, and it requires time. And it's the, the most valuable gift we can give our students, and without it, we simply haven't got anything to stand behind. Also in here, a very simple task, I think, will be accomplished later, is negotiate collective bargaining agreements. We do have very time-consuming collective bargaining going on with all of our major units. We're wrapping up our administrative assistants, we just finished before that cafeteria workers. We are now in Unit A with teachers, and Unit C, our instructional assistants. So, all three of these mean that we will be bringing, continuing good working contracts with these folks, but I will need a Unit C rep from the school committee, which has recently been vacated. And the rest of these are ongoing, but with a caveat that I noticed. The fourth goal has to do with physically and emotionally safe learning environments. And in writing this goal, we spoke and thought a lot about the experience of students here in Greenfield that have experienced trauma, and about 60% of our students are from low-income backgrounds, and many of these students have moved or relocated to the area, and some have experienced some form of what's called by the American Academy of Pediatrics, adverse childhood experiences, or ACEs. And there's a lot of research on the impact of ACEs on children's academic scores, as well as their long-term earning potential and their other sort of quality of life outcomes. And essentially, we want children to have their best foot forward, so that they move into the future confident and productive and contributing to our community here in Greenfield. So, these goals have that in mind, and a number of these have been met, and others are still ongoing. It has to do with first aid training that was provided, a number of meetings that have taken place around school safety and emergency, extraordinary work that has to do with regional planning and expanding that team. There's work ongoing in the Director of Pupils Service in my office, working with multi-tiered systems of support. That has to do with academic and emotional systems that are in place to catch not just one or two students, not just most students, but all students, and to support them as best we can. And then, ongoing relationships with state police, our school resource officer, and Greenfield Fire that have been ongoing and continuing. And as I say this, our, our lead nurse is here, she's been diligently attending these meetings, we appreciate you being here, and we have really done a lot of good work in this area, in both social, emotional, and physical safety, that I think put our district in a very strong position. And then, the last goal has to do with supporting the school committee's key initiatives. One of the votes of the committee this year was to continue, I'm sorry, to initiate the review of the policy work, and in updating the entire policy manual, all 300 or more policies. And so, that is something that my office has made a priority and is going through. That work is underway and moving forward well. There is one thing that I would like your support on, which is just to note that there's been several questions- been several questions about the fourth bullet point, which is, in my goals, it states that the committee voted to post for interview, hire, and train an administrative assistant or recording secretary to support the school committee's vote to create such a position and take subcommittee minutes. And in several instances, that has been, there have been various votes about whether or not that is in effect in subcommittee. So I just want to point out that these are my voted goals by the full school committee, and so I will continue to advocate for that role because it's consistent with the vote of the committee. If there are specific questions on any updates, I'm happy to provide them.
I see Member Karen first.
Well, I really do support getting out the information about all the wonderful programs at all of our schools. Specifically, it seems to be a really public interest in what's happening at our middle school. Would it be a good idea to maybe have student representatives from there?
Yes. In fact, the middle school principal had just had this conversation with me, and we would absolutely love to hear their voice. We're thinking perhaps next month, Principal Kuzland? Yes, I'm seeing a yes.
I mean, they may not have quite the availability with the younger not able to drive themselves places. So it may even be like the CSL comes and talks to us this month, or, you know, might have to think out of the box on that one, but I would love to have that happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Member Karen. Any other questions or comments for the superintendent? I appreciate the update on all of this, and, you know, when I sat down to review and give this some consideration, I, it was really, it was actually really nice. It was really nice to sit down and see the goals and the key actions listed out, because I could say, yeah, that's been done, that's in progress, this is what we're doing. And there's a lot here, and I know that there's a lot more going on. And sometimes, one sentence, say, you know, related to the turnaround work, doesn't really reflect back the volume of work that's involved there, the energy that goes into that. So I really appreciate that everything is listed out really clearly. I also agree with Member Karen, support the idea of, you know, pulling and highlighting some of the great things that we offer. I've heard some individual members of the public request or sort of question, attention that gets paid to the Four Corners School, and I think that it's coming out of interest in highlighting also what's happening at the other two elementary schools. So I think that there is a lot that we can do to help and support that. One question that I do have is, where are we with recruitment of a curriculum director? I know that this position has been open for a long time. Can you give us a brief update or input on that?
Yes. We certainly do not have that position filled. We do have an interview scheduled again for another round Monday, perhaps. It's upcoming, and I would say Monday or Tuesday next week. I don't remember the date. There's a representative panel of teachers, administrators, serving on that panel. We have, in the past, had a challenging time finding qualified applicants. And by qualified, I mean not just credentialed, but experienced in public education K to 12. We're really looking for somebody who are pre-K to 12, actually, because they need to be familiar and confident leading the work of aligning. If a child enters Greenfield Public Schools today, what is the robust vision that will carry them through to high school, from their preschool career to graduation, into their career or college or beyond? And that comprehensive understanding of what does it take to help them be fulfilled in their academic experience in every single year is important. So for example, we're not looking for somebody who might have had experience at the secondary level but is not familiar with work at our youngest grades. And so we are looking for somebody who has a depth of knowledge, state standards, which are rapidly changing, and are rigorous here in Massachusetts, specific to our state, and willing to lead that work. So if you are at home and you're thinking, gosh, that is me, I love kids, I'm great at my job, and I know everything you just said, please apply.
Thank you. Any additional comments or questions? Yes, Member Ashram.
I know that I've mentioned this before, but it's not included in the superintendent's performance goals, and I am, I bring this up because I know there's a lot of work that is going into the River?
Green River?
Yes, the Green River School, and the superintendent is involved with that. And I have, I've wanted to see it on here because I know it's taking a lot of work, and she had mentioned, well, you know, I don't need credit for that. I'm not asking, I'm not, I wouldn't reduce it to you're needing credit. It's just a lot of work that's involved in doing that, whether it's open or not open. So I just want to say again that I'm, I would have been a-okay with seeing it on your form. That's all.
Yes, Mayor Martin?
Thank you. I have a couple of questions, just observations, and I'd like some response, not tonight, certainly. There's been some conversation about equality and diversity. So the parity equality has to do with the funds dispersed to the different sites, and the diversity has to do with the diversity ratios in each of the school sites. This has been brought forward to me on a number of occasions, and both in writing and in conversation at subcommittee meetings. I also have, historically, we've always looked at the neighborhood schools as a neighborhood school, and we've had some conversations about this in the past month or so regarding, how do you move from one district to another district? How do you move, there's been a conversation with some principals as to how do you, how do we share the student-age children in town to the neighborhood schools? So any type of formal policy or informal policy, or, you know, if I wanted to move my children from one, from my neighborhood to another school, how does that all happen? And then lastly, I'm concerned about the increase in choice out, and the funds, as indicated by the business manager in the superintendent's budget, is pretty heavy. It's at $2.8 million out, and our choice in money is actually decreasing. We had some higher choice in money two years ago, and the trend is now decreasing. How can the school committee help you bring in, bring in some students at the risk of harming other districts, but to bring in some students to offset the harm that's done to us, the monetary harm that's done to us in the choice out? Thank you.
So just quickly, I think the superintendent, you want to respond, it seems like. So all of those things are interesting topics, and some of them do relay back, of course, to the superintendent's performance in general, and some of them could be sort of focused on some of the goals and key actions that are listed here. One of the things that I immediately think of is what we've just heard a request for is additional support for highlighting the unique programs that we have and the unique opportunities that we have here in the Greenfield Public Schools. But I just want to caution us, because I feel like, you know, when we start to talk about choice and then we move into budget deliberation, we're moving a bit off topic here. So with that said, superintendent has a response. You have the floor, Superintendent.
Right. So just to address a few of those things, two things. One is that I forgot to mention earlier, I do, in addition to tonight's verbal update, provide a monthly report, and I do break down every single month what activities are happening, and I relate them to these goals. So in addition to what's being presented tonight, and so the public knows, the committee supplies each month of individual actions that are taken towards this. The mayor has two, raised two points. I'll start with the school choice. The first way that the committee can help is that school choice in is capped by this committee, and the number of seats is limited by how many seats we post into the newspaper and local media and report to the Department of Education, and how many seats this committee votes. So when you open up that fourth grade section at Four Corners, which lets us accept school choice seats in, that helps this goal. It helps us attract folks who want to be here in Greenfield, and it helps our Greenfield residents keep Greenfield Public Schools their first choice, their best choice, and to keep their children right here. But it's also true at our other schools. So that's the first thing, is that while the committee talks about how many students choice in or out, there's no cap on whether students choice out, and there is a cap. So by necessity, the committee can work on one end of that equation. The second thing is that we'd have to look at the numbers. I don't have them in front of me tonight, but we have talked about this on a number of occasions, and I'm not sure that it's accurate to say that choice out is increasing. What's increasing is the dollar value that the state assigns to the number, to the per-pupil cost of students that are choicing out. So the dollar value, the impact, has absolutely increased. But we will see that that number increases if the per-pupil cost increases also. So in terms of a trend and number of pupils, we have seen families choosing to increase choice in, for example, at the high school level with the opening of the new facility. They have taken advantage of new seats at Greenfield High School, and we've continued to exceed our demand for choice in seats every single year. So we generally fill 100% of our choice in seats here in Greenfield annually.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mayor Martin?
The state law requires that the school committee vote in May of each year to set the number of seats available for choice in. And the seats available are presented by the superintendent to us as recommendation of empty seats reported to her by the principals. So we can be as open-door as we would like, but we are only getting information on empty seats that exists. So creating classrooms is not what we've often decided not to be involved in because of the cost, but we want all of our seats that are already accounted for to be optioned or offered for people, parents to choice in, and students. On the other side, with the per-pupil cost, I might understand that the choice out costs are higher than the choice in cost. So even though it's more money, it's, if all the student, cost per student is the same, then we're still losing the same amount of money, and we're falling in a deficit. And if it's the per-pupil cost, how is that arrived at? Is that by increasing our budget to increase the cost, so when students choice out, we increase the choice out money? So those are some other questions I'd like to have, you know, detailed answer.
I'm not sure.
So I think that we will have a more in-depth conversation on choice. I also do want to clarify, my understanding is that choice in, choice out, it's $5,000. It's capped at $5,000. However, that's not the case with charter school. So am I incorrect? Has the choice value changed? And I'm not aware of that.
It's generally $5,000, but sometimes if you take in more special ed or special needs.
Sure. Sure, sure. Thank you. So just to reiterate what Steve said for the record, since he's not on the mic, he said that it's capped at $5,000 unless there's a special education child that may require additional services. So I do want to, I want to press pause on the choice conversation. It's clear that the committee is interested in further discussion on school choice, and we will have that opportunity in the next month or two, as indicated by the mayor. We do vote on this, and we will hear recommendations from the superintendent as to the number of choice seats that we would like to allow for. So I see the superintendent's hand, then I see Member Hollins. You, did you have more?
Sure. The second point of that was the mayor asked, how can the committee help? And then referenced earlier votes that this committee has taken, where the decision was made not to extend additional choice seats by virtue of adding a teacher. That can be reversed. For example, at the budget vote last week, there was a vote to add a teacher out of the choice, school choice account, and then to allow Greenfield students to take a seat first, but that does expand then additional school choice seats to somebody coming in. That same scenario, as we went through the math a week ago, it can be net positive to the district, even though you have an additional cost. What it allows for is Greenfield enrollment to expand first and foremost, and our enrollment is stable and expanding. And we've seen that trend consistently over a number of years, whereas our neighboring districts are experiencing declining enrollment, we're seeing steady and increasing in enrollment here in Greenfield. And that's a good sign. It's a sign of the health of our district, the health of our population, and we want to see that continue. So in certain areas, it may make sense to reconsider that decision of the committee when we're talking about opportunities for choice. And then just really quickly, I don't think it relates to my goals, actually, but the district consideration about intra-district or neighborhood schools, is an easier way to say that, is a worthwhile discussion, but I think it's a much lengthier discussion. And I think it could well be part of next year's goals, for example, to look at the districts that go to Newton School or Federal Street School or Four Corners School. Certainly, it relates to how Green River School is used. If you were to open that up as a, you know, different type of building, you might want to reexamine some of those lines, and to talk with it about the associated costs of if you are allowed to ride a school bus, or if you have to transport yourself, and all of those different. But I think it warrants study, communication with families, conversation, and a lengthy public conversation. So I don't think that's anything for tonight.
Thank you, Superintendent. Member Hollins?
I'd like to, I look forward to this interesting and high-priority subject in the future. I'd just like to make two clarifications, what I think are clarifications. The choice out cost is $5,000 plus 100% of the special education costs, and I think last year, the superintendent's office provided information that sometimes that is what's driving up costs. And secondly, we are required to provide our best estimate of seats available in May, but there's so much that happens between then. And I'm pretty sure when we voted that we made a special provision to be flexible, so I believe at any time, someone could return, the superintendent could return and say, can I bring in five more? I don't think we're locked into our estimate.
Thank you, Member Hollins. Are there any other?
I have one further comment, which is to, in the spirit of what the mayor just suggested, we've talked on this committee. It would be very, this is a pivotal time for our region, and I do think that there's extraordinary merit in exploring the ideas of more robust partnerships with neighboring districts. What's in my goals is to consider some cost sharings. We've explored that. For an example of that is the collective bus bid that we've been talking about. But I think we have an opportunity to exceed that and to have some more significant conversations. But it is such a time-consuming kind of initiative, and it is different than focusing on the Greenfield Public Schools to talk about whether to partner with other neighboring districts, that if there's interest in that on this committee, then I'd be happy to explore that. But we would need this committee to signal that with a vote and to recognize the priority and time commitment it would take, and to have a possible conversation about prioritization of tabling something else to focus on that. Right now, in our region, there is that conversation. Greenfield is the county seat. There is a conversation we could be exploring about, and the mayor has suggested some specific ways, and we've always followed up in each of those instances. But that's different than a robust conversation between school committees, for example. And the Greenfield School Committee hasn't, to my knowledge, been part of that dialogue. And I want to make sure we're not missing an opportunity.
Thank you, Superintendent. Any further questions or comments on the superintendent's goals mid-cycle review? Okay. So we will move on to the next item, however, I'd like to take a very, very brief bathroom So yeah, can we take a quick recess, about three minutes, and come right back? Does that work for you all? Great. Thank you. Great. Hi, everyone. We are back. We lost much of our audience. That's okay. Ian's still here. Thank you, Ian, from GCTV. You are, you know, a reliable audience member. Thank you so much. Okay, so we're back. Thank you, committee members. I really needed a bathroom break. We have one more item on our main agenda. I'm sorry, actually, yeah, one more item on our main agenda. This is the committee and superintendent response to public input. This was brought forward because there was an interest in some conversation about This was brought forward because there was an interest in some conversation about how we, as a committee, respond to public input, generally, public comments. But we do receive public input in a lot of different forms. So I expanded this to include also the superintendent response and just generally public input, because we receive, as I noted, public input generally from email, sometimes in other ways. So in your packet, what I did was I included, I believe, all of the policies, or at least the majority of the policies, that relate to sort of the committee and the district relationship with the public. And in here, you'll see the policy that I read earlier, which is public participation at school committee meetings. That's our public comment policy. You'll also see special procedures for conducting hearings. We went through that before at the budget, FY '20 budget hearing as well. There are some other relevant policies in here, including complaints policies. So, you know, occasionally, we do receive complaints, and there are processes for that. So this is all here for the committee. I also included a very brief email that I had with Liz Lefon from the MASCE, and this, I believe, was actually far before the vote. I'm not sure what prompted me to do this, if there was just an interest. It might have been right around the vote. But I was asking for some clarification. Oh, it was an email to the committee, okay. No, that was February, this is February 1st. That was February 8th. So anyway, you'll see in her response, a little information about her recommendation in terms of like how to respond, and who should be responding. What I found to be kind of really helpful here is just, well, I mean, we can read it. I also had a brief phone call with Liz as a follow-up more recently, just, I think, last Friday. And I asked her specifically about, you know, kind of anything to take into consideration if we wanted to respond immediately to public comment in a meeting. And her response was that the reason why we don't respond is actually because things come up, things can come up that may not be on the agenda. And this actually totally points back to the public comment policy in some ways. So she said that, you know, if, if somebody comes and they start talking about, you know, something that may not be on the agenda, or is unexpected, and we respond to it, it opens up the doors for us to be deliberating on items that we haven't posted clearly on our agenda. So it opens up the doors for some potential open meeting law violations. And she said, you know, that's, that's like one really main reason why it's not recommended to deliberate or have any kind of response back to members of the public in the, in the actual public comment period. And then, of course, it does, that does kind of reflect, like I just said, back to the public comment policy, which essentially is saying, you know, we want public comment on items that are on our agenda. And I think that that does, if we adhere to that, it actually does allow us, within the context of our already scheduled deliberation, to potentially comment on some of the items that the public may be commenting on. So I am not aware of any necessary vote with this. This is here kind of informationally, and for an opportunity to speak, I see your hand, Member Hollins. So I do want to open the floor for some comments. Of course, if there's a motion, you can put it forward. I think I've scheduled about 20 minutes for this, trying to get us out of here by 9:30 at the latest. So let's just kind of keep our comments concise, and we'll see where we go. Member Hollins, what do you have?
This is an issue that I raised, and I never had the idea that we would start talking to people when they come to us in public comment. My concern is that we, first, and I was never talking about the public generally communicating to the superintendent. My concern was specifically people who communicate to the school committee, they write to the school committee, or they speak to us in public comment. And my concern is that we're consistent and fair. What, the reason I brought it up is one person might send an email to the full school committee, and that person gets a response, and another person might send an email to the school committee, and that person doesn't get a response. Or one person might speak to the school committee. And I think we should be consistent and fair, and I also think we should be clear who is responding. I personally would have no problem if the school committee voted that when someone writes to the school committee, that we want the superintendent to respond. But if we haven't said that, if the communication comes to the school committee, I think the school committee should, I just think it should be fair and consistent. And I don't see that it is, not by choice, it's just the way it seems to happen. But it was never my concern that we'd start talking to people during public comment, I don't, I wouldn't agree with that.
Okay, thank you, Member Hollins. So it's my understanding that the chairperson is the spokesperson for the committee, and the superintendent is the spokesperson for the district. This is clearly outlined in the, at least the policy that relates to media communication. And in the email from Liz, she does state, let me find it. Well, at the beginning, she suggests if, if an email is specifically public comment, the email should be printed and brought to the next school committee meeting as public comment, so that all school committee members see the public comment slash email. And a response would be, thank you for your email. The school committee will receive a copy of your public comment at the next regularly scheduled meeting. She goes on to say, in general, the superintendent could reply to an email to clarify any question brought forward. Emails to school committee members that require a response to a school district matter should be forwarded to the superintendent for response. The school committee member could certainly forward to the superintendent with a CC to the sender, so that the constituent understands that the superintendent will reply. So I think that we do actually, this kind of points a little bit to complaints. Complaints is like a larger, in our complaint policy, it very clearly articulates that we want to tackle any complaints at the lowest level possible, and that any, any kind of complaints that we receive as individual committee members, or as a full committee, should be directed to the superintendent, and the superintendent can direct them to whoever she needs to direct them to. And then there's a process for response to that. And then I hear Member Hollins in, you know, sort of pointing out some inconsistency with response to emails, but I do also want to say that I've tried really hard during my chairpersonship to at least, at a minimum, respond to, to at least let the individual know that we received their email. With past chairpeople, I think that, at least in terms of a full committee response, where everyone knew that the comment was responded to, that wasn't always the case. And I remember back when Tim Farrell was the chair, it was a question that I had too, which was like, you know, what, you know, why don't you respond? What do we do, like, you know, what's the protocol here? I also just want to say that I really appreciate, I mean, the superintendent is our chief executive, and I 100% support the superintendent responding to anything related to like district matters, as Liz suggests in the email. I saw your hand or some movement, did you want to say something?
I'm done.
Okay, I'm good for now. Okay, I see the superintendent, and then I see Member Ekstrom.
So I just, I struggle with our limiting public comment strictly to what is on the agenda, and I will share why. Prior to my being on the school committee, I would show up at committee meetings regardless of what the agenda was, if there was something that was going really, that I felt like wasn't, wasn't being addressed at a district level, not at the individual school level. And Bill, at one point, was the chair, and Tim was the chair prior to that, and they were both gracious enough to allow me to talk about special education and my hope for it to get more attention, and things like that. And I don't know that those necessarily were on the agenda, but I was very thankful to have been allowed to speak. And I think that there, and this is just my own opinion, and I fully understand the policy, it absolutely makes sense, but I think that, that there are times that, you know, you can't put off for something, you can't put some topic off for two months when it's timely and happening at that moment, I guess is my point. So I just wanted to mention that.
Superintendent?
I think this is an important topic, and how the public interacts with the committee is important to many people, certainly folks at home that are watching, and there are a lot of people that watch, even if they don't come in person, follow what the committee is doing, and what is done here matters, and their voices need to be heard, and they need to know how the committee responds. Having said that, the chair brought forward tonight all of our policies on that, and right now, we are going through a policy review process. These policies are in subcommittee right now, with the guidance of the Mass Association of School Committees, for the exact purpose of having this discussion. So I agree that there needs to be a consistent response, but actually, you know, one of the things that has been consistent is, as superintendent, I nearly always respond and say, to the emails addressed to the school comment, say, thanks for contacting us, and provide clarification if necessary. And recently, there was a question about whether or not I was allowed to do that. I think rather than hashing it out now, the subcommittee is the perfect venue to decide if the policies should be recommended to change, or if they should continue as they are. And Member Ekstrom's comment is a good example of something that might be debated in subcommittee to allow exceptions or not. I'm concerned that, you know, taking this out of sync with our process for changing how things are done is unfair to the process of policy review underway, and is really significant to how the public goes about interacting with this committee, so deserves the same process of policy revision and review as everything else.
Thank you, Superintendent. I saw Mayor Martin, and then Member Hollins.
Thank you. I'm inclined to agree with Member Ekstrom that the, the, limiting the public comment to only agenda items is a prohibition and a restriction of public comment. So I'm not in favor of that. And I say that only because in recent days, I've been reading about the ACLU cases against school committees across Massachusetts, as they relate to restricting public comment. So there's already been one case, as I mentioned earlier, an ADAC school committee was, lost their case. It may or may not go to further litigation. A number of other school committees in the state, and over for one, are reconsidering the policies, because they're all taken from the Mass Association of School Committees. So even though you quote Liz from the Mass Association of School Committees, I'm wondering if maybe that is not part of the problem, and that we, times have changed, and I know our policies go back to 2006 and so on, and we need to have them reviewed. But the policies that the state is using, MASCE, maybe they have to be reviewed under the current situation for public comment. I want to say that I get, as a school committee person, or rather, as mayor, I get, I get emails, phone calls, and, and comments directly to me on school committee matters. So I, I can't see that I'm going to be restricted in any way in commenting on anything that I know about. You know, it's been 10 years, that door has been open in my office, people come in and out of there all the time. I get phone calls, emails, on the street. Any question, anytime has been my mantra, so, and I'm not going to change that at this point. I do the best I can to answer the question. If I don't, I may say, well, call the superintendent, or check with the committee chair, but it's hard to restrict free speech.
Member Hollins?
My, my call in bringing this up is that we are fair and consistent, we treat everyone the same. So I, I agree with almost all the guidelines you read that someone else gave to you. I don't agree we should put this off just as a matter of policy. So I, I would like to make a motion that would clarify the three things you've said, and what the superintendent has said, that, that we respond fairly inconsistently to public comment to the school committee. Two, that the chairperson is the spokesperson for the school committee according to our policy, and will answer for the school committee as a whole. And three, the chairperson will refer matters having to do with district matters or subcommittee matters to the superintendent, or the chair, or whatever, will refer matters and notify the person who's communicated of that. You know, thank you for your response, I've sent it to the superintendent to answer, thank you for your response, I've sent it to the chair of the safety committee who's working on that to give you the status, or something. What I object to is that Joe Smith, who's, who knows somebody, writes and gets a wonderful letter of response, and Joe Clark, who doesn't know anyone, and maybe that's not the reason, doesn't hear anything. I just want us to be the same to everybody. I'm not talking about communication, I'm not talking about complaints, or maybe that's part of it, I'm not talking about communications in general to the superintendent, I'm just strictly talking about someone is approaching the school committee at its meeting, or writing to the school committee, that's all. But I think those three guidelines capture everything you say, and I appreciate that you do write, and I appreciate that is our policy. But if it's going to be referred to someone, I appreciate the thought that you should say, thank you, I referred that, so people get a response from us.
I cannot second that motion.
Was that a motion?
It wasn't really a motion.
Okay, so, okay, so first I heard it was a motion, then I heard it was not really a motion.
I'd like to make a motion with these three points.
And then I heard Bill say, yeah, no. And then I just want to say, so again, you know, a little bit in my defense, I feel that I have actually done this pretty well in my chairpersonship, and I do try to just say thank you. And sometimes, all it is, is thank you, we received it. And that may not, I can't, I'm not sure what that feels like on the receiving end, it may not feel like what they want it to feel like, I'm not sure. But the reality is, is that I do think that that is a fair and sort of level, equal way to respond to people. And I have also witnessed the superintendent step in when I feel it's appropriate for her to step in. If there's an elaborate question about our district, then she, she fills in the details. And then, you know, related to complaints, we have the complaint policy, and we follow the complaint policy. So I guess, I feel like we are doing a pretty darn good job of what is being suggested that we do, and I'm happy to continue forward with that. And then just to mention, or just to comment quickly on what the mayor brought up, we're all individual elected officials, and I think that we all get a lot of input from different parts of our community. And I don't think that anything is, any of our policies are necessarily suggesting that we shouldn't, you know, interact with our constituents, and, you know, do the best we can to provide the information they need, they are asking about, and also refer to the superintendent as needed. So I guess I would just say, you know, mayor, I support you in doing that. I feel like it's part of our job. I saw somebody over here, no? No? Okay. Did you want to say something? Okay.
I'm just going to say that, given the, the comment that the mayor raised regarding the ACLU, that it may be appropriate to get some legal input on these policies, and that will forward the discussion, whether it's going to policy for further review, or whatever the next step would be. Obviously, it should be compliant with the law in respect individuals' rights to free speech within the policy of the school committee.
speech within the policy of the school committee.
Thank you, Superintendent. I would actually, I'll put forward a motion. I move to have the policy subcommittee take a more in-depth look at the public comment policy and potential response. We are actually reviewing Policy Section B. I think we're halfway through it right now. So it would be really easy to add it onto the agenda and just kind of spend a little bit more time with it and see if there's anything else that comes up at the subcommittee level. As an extension of my motion, also request legal input to support that conversation. So two items, to refer in-depth conversation on public comment and response of public comment to the policy subcommittee paired with receiving legal input from whichever attorney we prefer. I'll leave it at legal input. Okay, so that's my motion.
Second.
Two items. Second by Member Karen. Any deliberation on that? Okay. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that is unanimous. Yes, Member Hollins?
Could I ask that we go back and just check that we were even-handed in responding to people? Well, for example, the woman who spoke to us about her concern about Newton School, who came and spoke with her child, did we, anyone respond to her?
You mean in the vocal, like in the meetings?
I don't think we should talk during the meeting, but someone comes and says, blah, 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 blah. Do we?
Okay, so...
About an issue, do we respond back and say, "Thank you, we're referring that to the committee," or, "Thank you, we appreciate you speaking," or...
I think that this needs to be part of the subcommittee conversation and I can make a note of specifically responding to in-meeting public comment.
I just want us to treat everyone the same, that's my goal.
In general, no, please. In general, though, I do believe that I thank individuals for coming and speaking in public comment, and my simple recollection right now, without reviewing every video, which I am not going to do, is that in general, I give a general thank you. And the superintendent doesn't always respond to questions that are out there, and I think that, again, this is part of the balance of, you know, what's on our agenda, what's appropriate in the response, what, you know, what kind of deliberation we necessarily need to have. I think that we need to take this to subcommittee and we can come back with a recommendation and any potential changes. And, you know, again, like it all, it's all interwoven together, all of this. And I don't, I'm not aware of any time that I have, like, say, followed up via email, maybe once in my lifetime, you know? So...
Thank you for putting this on the agenda.
Did I see a hand over here? Did I make that up? Okay. What was that, Member Hollins?
I just wanted to thank you for putting this on the agenda.
Yeah, absolutely. It was voted by the committee, so here it is. Okay, so we did just vote to send it to Policy Subcommittee and get some legal input, and we will do that and it'll circle back. I'm sensing no further deliberation on this. Okay. Any new business items? I don't have any. Any new agenda item suggestions?
Want to go into executive session?
Thank you. That was a motion to enter into executive session by Mayor Martin. We would be entering into executive session for the purpose to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body and the chair so declares. This is in regards to Unit C. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Second by Member Karen. Can we have a roll call?
Excuse me.
There's a, there's a motion on the table.
I know, but are we allowed to comment? Because you asked before if there were any new agenda items and then you just moved right on without allowing...
Well, Mayor, the mayor made a motion. Okay, we have a motion on the table. Can we have a roll call, please?
Member Hollins?
No, because I think we should talk about new agenda items.
Member Martin? Or Mayor Martin?
I'm going to say no and for the benefit of having the Member Hollins provide topics for next agendas.
Member Karen?
I'll say no, so she can...
Can I?
Yes.
Member Ekstrom?
I'll say no as well, actually.
Okay.
It's the only opportunity we have to mention agenda items, and I had written several out for consideration. One is to review the two secretary and minute votes we took July 2018 to clarify any questions of subcommittees. Two, to bring up the discussion of school committee goals. And three, to put on the agenda referring the outdoor basketball services at the three elementary schools to refer to health facilities, subcommittee. Thank you.
Okay, so just quickly, the second one that you mentioned, we've already voted on, so that will be coming up at an upcoming agenda at some point. And then what is the first?
We took two votes about secretaries and minutes in July, and I don't think it's working well for the school committee and I would like that to come up for a discussion. It's been a lot of discussion about, I went back and looked at our vote, it was to have someone present at meetings, to have minutes come out as soon as their draft minutes are available to both of them. I'd just like us to go back and talk about it because we didn't vote that we would insist that someone provide minutes on a tape. We didn't vote that the draft minutes wouldn't come forward until, you know, a month later.
Okay, so, okay...
I'd just like it to come up for a rediscussion.
It's not accurate for the record.
So what I'm hearing you say is essentially a request to have Secretary Ekstrom review the minutes...
To revisit our votes in July.
And report back to the committee on committee votes related to hiring a school committee secretary? I think that...
It isn't working...
Is that accurate?
We made two votes...
No, can you just, just make it a motion?
To revisit our votes of July about secretaries.
Okay, so you're moving to revisit the votes about school committee secretary to take subcommittee minutes? Or whatever, subcommittee, okay. Okay, so you're interested in adding that to an agenda? Is there a second to add that to an upcoming agenda?
That was the first one. The second one was...
I know. I just want to say also too, that I've gotten, you know, I brought, at the last meeting, I brought this in a very democratic way to the committee because I receive a lot of different inputs, all the time, for things like this. Sometimes it's, sometimes it's, you know, small stuff, sometimes it's big stuff, requests for more subcommittees, requests for, all kinds of requests to come to the agenda. When we talked about this at the meeting, you know, so for me to bring it to the committee is in part just me trying to be as democratic as possible and to serve the committee, to serve the group. But that doesn't, I still have the authority of creating, you know, determining when these come up and creating in collaboration with the superintendent, the agenda. And I heard support at that meeting for me doing that and utilizing my own skills to prioritize what's going on with the committee. And I just want to caution us, I just want to caution us with our requests because they do take time and, you know, I just want to put that out there. So there's a motion on the table. Does the committee want to review the votes that have been taken related to hiring a school committee secretary to support the work of subcommittees of the school committee? Is there a second for that? Okay, so there's no second for that. So that motion fails. What was your third request, Member Hollins?
Having to do with the outdoor basketball surfaces at the elementary schools, referring that to the Health, Safety and Facilities Subcommittee to review it.
I think that's already...
Isn't that in the capital budget?
Well, it is in the cap...
Can you, yeah, go ahead.
It is in the capital budget, but that request is also being, was before the Conservation Commission Tuesday night, apparently somebody is making a proposal to get a permit to pave the basketball court. So I don't know if the superintendent's office is involved or not.
Superintendent?
So this has come to the committee in a couple of different ways. In the capital process, there was a request for paving at Newton School in a public comment. A parent spoke to the PTO, having private funds to fund the basketball court, and through the capital process, I represented to the capital CIP committee and then on to the mayor from that office, that the school committee endorsed the paving project and that the PTO and some grant funds, they wanted to do the paving of the basketball court at Newton School at the same time because it's our understanding that the cost for the whole project, even if the PTO picks up the basketball court portion, that the cost for the whole project will be less if they're done at the same time with appropriate permitting. So that was the intent of that moving forward. The other two schools were not addressed for their basketball courts, is my recollection in the capital, but that vote has now passed. So if it went to health and safety, any change to that would be for an upcoming capital cycle.
Okay, so there's a motion on the table. Is there a second at all? There was a motion put forward, is there a second for the motion?
I don't believe there was a motion. That was a suggestion for new agenda items for the next meeting. There were three items suggested by Member Hollins.
Member Hollins, can you please rephrase your request as a motion?
To refer the outdoor basketball issue to the Health, Safety and Facilities Committee.
Is there a second? Okay, no second. So the motion fails. Thank you for the conversation, Mayor and Superintendent, in updating us, clarifying where that's at. Okay. I moved into executive session for the purpose of bargaining, Unit C, MGL, C38213.
Will you be coming back to vote?
We will not be coming back to vote. There was a second by you, Member Ekstrom, thank you. And a roll call, please.
Member Hollins?
I know it.
Member Hollins?
Yes.
Member Hollins is a yes.
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Member Karen?
Yes.
Member Nunes?
Yes.
And myself, we are in a...
You are a yes? Okay, great, we are now in executive session.
It is win.
All of our productions at GCTV are sponsored in part by Bay State Health, providing the care you and your family need when you need it close to home. Visit them online at baystatehealth.org. Greenfield Savings Bank, visit them at 400 Main Street in Greenfield, call them at 774-3191, or go online to greenfieldsavings.com. Greenfield Community College, providing access and excellence in higher education in the Pioneer Valley. Visit them at gcc.mass.edu. The Hammond Family, The Hammond Family are longtime supporters of Greenfield Community New Fortune Chinese Restaurant on the Mohawk Trail in Greenfield, visit them online at newfortunema.com, call them at 772-0838, and check them out on Facebook. Real Cleaning Services, cleaning Hampshire and Franklin County since 1972. We don't cut corners, we clean them. Check them out online at realclean.com, call them at 413-422-1143. Peoples United Bank, located at 45 Federal Street in Greenfield, you can call them at 774-3713, or visit them online at peoples.com. The Solar Store of Greenfield, replacing fossil fuels and nuclear power one home at a time. Visit them at 23 Fisk Ave, call them at 413-772-3122, or visit them online at solarstoreofgreenfield.com. Thank you to our sponsors for supporting all of GCTV's productions.